To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a way of respecting, honoring, and creating awareness about our past, we begin our village board meetings by acknowledging that New Paltz is on the ancestral land of the Muntzi, Esopis, and Lenape people.
I'm looking here at the agenda, and then we had a couple of items that we wanted to add to the agenda. Are we just adding those at the, at the very end? Looks like someone inserted something we're under approval of agenda, but then they're not down below in the business section.
They, they are not, but Katie and I talked about that the K through 12 remote and the police reform report should just go under climate equity and justice-related items and that that could be, you know, just moving forward in perpetuity for however long we want to be having those announcements. We can include them in that part of the business agenda. And then this park use request, unless you guys want to talk about it, we could put it on the consent agenda, but that's totally your call.
I would like to put that on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just want us to make sure, I mean, I had nothing to do with this, but I spoke with the chief about it and like, any chance that we can talk about it out loud is always good, even if it's quick.
Let's make an announcement.
Yeah, because, you know, it seems like a really cool event.
Yeah, Alex, summarize that when we do announcements.
Sounds good.
So then I'm looking at the rest of this business agenda. There was nothing else here to add, right, Ari?
Nope, that's all.
Okay, I would like to, well, then I don't need to motion to amend the agenda. So let's jump right into announcements.
Well, you still need to approve the agenda, and it technically is amended because of the consent, the addition of a consent agenda.
Oh, because we added something to the consent agenda. Okay, I would like to move that we amend and approve both the consent agenda and the business agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
So Alex, why don't you provide us with the update on the opioid overdose prevention event?
So, you know, I'm not in any way involved with it, but I'm really excited and I'm going to help in every way I can to help spread the word and whatnot. And, you know, I'll be there if I'm feeling well, because it is like a social distance in person. Like Narcan training, basically. And so the town has been doing like virtual Narcan trainings, which is so cool. But I'm really excited because we have this park right in the middle of everything, and it just really seems to gel in such a cool way, because it's, you know, right where we're working on the skate park project. That's exactly where, you know, we should have such, you know, opioid prevention awareness trainings, you know, Narcan is something everyone needs to have in their kitchen and, you know, in their purse if you're not in the sun all day. Basically, if you want to cry, our county executive Pat Ryan gave an update on fatal opioid overdoses at the beginning of this month. Basically, we have had more in Ulster County fatal opioid overdoses in 2020 so far than we did in all of 2019. And about 12% of these fatalities, well, 12% of all overdoses in our county, opioid overdoses that we know of, you know, turn out to be these fatalities. So it's, it's really a big problem. There were 10 such fatalities in our county in the month of April alone. So I'm really grateful for, you know, Phoenix and the town and our chief, you know, for putting on, you know, events like this. And I'm really dedicated to doing whatever I can to help spread the word about it. So that's on August 31st in Hasbrook Park, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Good stuff. And then we have this other idea where it seemed like a few of us on the village board were interested in volunteering over the weekend, where we would hang out downtown Main Street and try to remind people to do the census if they have not already and kind of are encouraging folks to wear masks in New Paltz campaign. And then a third item is to tell people that we intend to start enforcing parking meter rules effective 8/22, Saturday, August 22nd.
Can I provide a quick census update, some facts and stats? Since the last time we saw each other, a few weeks, two weeks ago. So the deadline for the census, as everyone hopefully knows by now, but if you don't, now you know, it's now September 30th. It is no longer Halloween. So they moved that up because the federal government asked for more time to count it all. I don't, I don't know. So that, that puts a little bit more stress on us because that's less than 50 days. So as of August 9th, Ulster County as a whole was at a 57% response rate, which is below both the national and New York State response rates. The, the country as a whole right now, or as of August 9th, was at 63.3%. And our state was at 59.1%. So not only does our county lag behind, but here in New Paltz, we're behind too. So New Paltz Town outside Village right now, or as of, you know, August 9th, was at 64.5% response rate. But then here in the Village, as of August 9th, we were at 56.7% response rate, which I do want to point out is a small improvement since two weeks ago. So good job to the few, you know, households that, you know, took, took a few seconds after I rambled about this to respond. But they are now sending out people to go door to door, which seems just so stressful. So if you can avoid putting someone in that position, you know, just go online. You can, you can do the census online, you can do it over the phone, there's a billion ways. We now have a cool link right on our Village website. It's pretty, pretty right there, you know, as soon as you go to the website. Thank you so much to Ariana for doing that. It's in my signature, in my email. And we'll be spreading the word in a bazillion other ways. And just a quick reminder that you do your census forever, for wherever you were on April 1st, 2020. Thanks.
Cool. I thought I'd also make this an announcement, just because we're working on a few different things. You know, these are all projects that we've discussed previously, but I thought it was interesting because they're all related to land transactions. So one of them has to do with the purchase agreement that we're working on with the Mohan Preserve, where we're looking to buy a 2.4 acre parcel that's next to our water treatment plant. So that agreement has been sent back to the team at the preserve, and they're going to be editing that with their attorneys. And then another project relates to the parking lot area that the village owns, where we're looking to sell that property. Hopefully we'll have an update on that soon. And, you know, that is the address at 10 North Chestnut Street. And then the, the third is the Five Broadhead House that Jacob, why am I drawing a blank on the, the black builder who we've spoken about from the mid 1800s who served in a black infantry unit?
Wine Coop.
Wine Coop. Jacob Wine Coop, who was involved in its construction. So we have this plan where Stewart's has generously agreed to carve out the 0.06 acre parcel where the house resides. And then we would go ahead and create some sort of RFP process and find a developer to acquire it and restore the house. We'll put some other conditions that we think are interesting that will help memorialize its, its history and New Paltz's history with, with black individuals in our community during that time period. But we're just waiting for the purchase agreement to be sorted out between ourselves and Stewart's. But that seems to be going along very nicely. We're just going to send a draft purchase agreement over to them, hopefully in the next few days. So those are my announcements. Do we have any other announcements before we go on to these two public hearings that we have?
I don't know if this is an announcement or if it, yeah, I guess it is an announcement. Just wanted to share a quick update from Funop Bombs and a reminder of how to get in touch. Does that count? That's an announcement. So it's wild because Funop Bombs has been so active here in the community, you know, since at least like 2003-ish. And just seeing it, you know, in action these past few months, like really reaching out to families that might never have, you know, stopped and joined us for a community meal in the past. That's been really, really cool. So just want to remind people that, you know, meals are still, you know, available for anyone who needs or wants food every single Wednesday. You just have to let Funop Bombs know by Tuesday afternoon, end of day-ish, by texting or calling the number I've been sharing all over my trustee social media. It's also right here. It's 845-419-8078. And the crew will, you know, pack you up, you know, a bag. They'll hold you over for, for, you know, a good part of the following week. Just make sure you indicate how many you are. And if you eat everything or if you're a vegetarian, because sometimes someone will donate, you know, like turkey for a sandwich or something. And if you're able to pick it up from the sidewalk across the street from Wells Fargo on Wednesday between 5:30 and 6:00, or if you need it delivered. And if you need it delivered on a day that we're not having a village board meeting, you might be lucky enough to have me show up in your front yard with it.
Can you just say again when we need to let them know by?
By Tuesday afternoon, end of day-ish. And you can text or call that number. It's the Funop Bombs hotline. Thanks. I feel like I'm good on announcements now.
Okay, so that's it with announcements. So I'd like to motion that we go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the no left turn law at the intersection of Tricor and Hasbrook. So this is basically an update. Second, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
So this is basically just an update to get rid of the, the rules where you can't make a left turn, whether you're going north or south on Tricor. And it makes sense that we would get rid of this because now we have stop signs in, in all four directions. So did we receive any public comments?
We have no public comments either submitted before the meeting or submitted now.
Okay, do we want to, I, I guess we wouldn't discuss as a board, but I, I would be comfortable going ahead and closing the public hearing for this proposed law and then adding it to our business agenda down below?
Yes.
Okay, that's a second. So all in favor of closing the, the public hearing on the left turns prohibited?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so the next item is just some improved language in our Shade Tree law. Did we, I motioned that we open the Shade Tree amendments?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
You know, this seemed all very straightforward. It was just some important wordsmithing that, that made things a bit more clear. If anyone wants to summarize it, feel free, but I'm actually very comfortable and like, well, I guess first I'll ask, did we receive any public comments related to this proposal?
We have not received any public comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just echo what you said. It's, it's pretty straightforward and it just gives more clarity to the Shade Tree Commission so they can do their job effectively.
So I, I'm comfortable if we go ahead and close this public hearing and then move this agenda item down to the end of our business agenda this evening.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Do we have any, I, do we have any other public comments on any other topics?
We do not.
Okay, I would like to motion that we move the consent agenda.
You already did that.
Okay. Then the next item, we were going to take those things that were listed up above and commenting on them related to climate equity and justice-related items and updates. Someone want to discuss?
Yeah, I'll do that. First, I would just say thank you to Noelle for her service on the planning board. We're sad to lose her. So those two items are, the first one is K-12 remote issues for working parents. This is basically an initiative that just, you know, sprung up since the school district announced that K-12 in the New Paltz Central School District is going to be 100% remote until further notice. And this poses tremendous challenges for working families. People who either have to leave their home and go to work and then have to figure out what to do with their kids or have to work from home with their kids in their house. And imagine a scenario where you're a teacher, where you're supposed to be in your house, teaching other people's kids while you're also doing it with your own kid. So and let's not forget the single moms, many, many single moms, single parents, in fact, you know, not having as many choices when there's dual income families. So since childcare kind of just fell into the laps of school districts, it wasn't like thoughtful policy or anything like that. It was just what happened when we started doing K-12 education the way that we do. So it's like part of the foundation of our economy just got pulled, right? The rug right out from under it. And we have to figure out what we're going to do for all these families that are struggling. And it's not just a childcare issue because it's, it's sort of, I don't know what the new language is, but you know, it's childcare, it's, you know, and as well as, you know, assistance with learning or something like that, right? Because it's, it's, it has this whole other component of taking care of kids and also keeping them engaged with their education. So in my Benjamin Center Director hat, I'm working with a group of county level actors and we're taking an inventory of the childcare that's available, you know, across the county, the locations, the staffing issues, the capacity of the locations that are there and, and the resources that are available. And you know, you know, the Ulster County Childcare Council people are in the room, you know, Office of Economic Development is in the room. And so I thought we should replicate that at our local level. And I already talked to Jim Tinger from the youth program, Diana Smith from the Food Pantry on Campus, Amy Hemminger from the Middle School PTA. And we're going to start a working group on this. And at a minimum, our first thought is that we just need like to do, you know, a resource doc or like a mutual aid for working parents. You know, replicate what we did with the COVID resource doc and just start dumping information for people in there. So at a minimum, people have a place to go and it's like one-stop shopping for what we know about all of this. So and then also at the local level, trying to figure out like, you know, what do we have? How, and you know, what outside door spaces can we utilize? How can we level the playing fields when the this is just such as gonna reveal such as the stark inequities between households that are resourced to I don't even want to say effectively manage because that even seems too generous, but like, I mean, highly resourced households are going to have better outcomes than, than households less resourced right now. So we're in a crisis and we need to focus, you know, I wish we didn't live in a world of austerity budgeting where you had to prioritize things. But highest need right now for me and our community is just this, this is the issue right now. So that's what's happening with that. I have a Google form for issues for working parents where you can put in, you know, what your challenges are, what your story is so that we can compile those and communicate back to the school district and, and other stakeholders in this. And so we can try to do this as a community and not like leave it on the backs of the school district that has enough to do right now. And it definitely can't be on the backs of the individual households to just figure this out. We have to do it together. So that's where I'm at with that. So to be continued.
Thanks for that work on, on that and taking this initiative so needed. Um, quick question, what kind of resources would be helpful for that mutual aid resource doc? Or we could talk about it later, but I feel like I have a couple of spreadsheets that I just never knew where to stick in, in any of the things that we did. So I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, you know, we've all been watching the robust mutual aid network that grew out happened in Kingston, and we really didn't have that happen here. And I feel like this is the issue that's going to make that happen now. So how, how can we nurture that and support that? So yeah, let's definitely talk about like what that could look like and what spaces and where to get to, who we need to get to and all that stuff.
Cool.
So unless there's any other questions, I can do the police reform update as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. Let's hear the police reform update.
So the town appointed five people to what they're now calling a steering committee for the police reform. I keep forgetting what it's actually being called. It's like Reform and Reinvention, the link to the town webs, you know, webpage for Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. They've had a bunch more stuff there and you can link to that through the agenda. They appointed five people to be on a steering committee. Reverend Jennifer Berry, Albert Cook, Randall LeBarrette, Diana Armstead, and Essie Lewis. And they're going to be the core group that's going to take it from here. So they're going to figure out how to add more people into the process, figure out roles and responsibilities. Chief Lukeyzie, Deputy Supervisor Dan Torres and I are kind of just there as resources at this, as this point. But they have graciously agreed to take on this work and lead this work. And I'm really excited. I, I think this, this, these people are some of my favorite people. So I know they're going to just put their hearts into it and do amazing, good work. So that's where it's at. The, there's still talk of doing a kind of police 101 awareness sessions, both to, you know, teach, you know, whoever's going to be working on this about, you know, police budget 101, police policy 101, what are the trainings, you know, all of the stuff. It's, it's a big charge, you know, like I was talking to somebody about it today and I was like, like, you know, this could be a $100,000 study. This could be a $50,000 study. It could be a $20,000 study and like the scope of the work would be adjusted as to how much you could do. And we have, we're doing a $0 study with really high expectations. So we're going to like do our best, but I, I hope that people calibrate their expectations and understanding of how this is going with, you know, in, in a, in a resource world, there'd be a facilitator and all sorts of people who know how to deal with these issues. And so we're going to do our best, but just kind of felt a little important to say, you know, we're trying hard, but this is, this is a, there's a lot that's being asked in this executive order that seems simple at first glance. And other communities, you can and other communities are just checking off a box and, you know, doing the lowest that you can do. And I commend the town for wanting to do a lot more than just that. So yeah, I think the next report back will be, you know, whenever they're going to do another public thing or maybe whenever they're going to do appointing more people. Any questions on that one?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Awesome has arrived.
Let me change my name, hold on.
Is that the dog's name? Oh, um, could I provide a quick tenant landlord update underneath the equity items? Because I figured it goes in with the police. Yeah. So as everybody knows, we have a landlord tent relations council in the village, which has proven to be like the most awesome thing ever during this pandemic because it's been such a resource, you know, this group of volunteers. We always need more volunteers. So, you know, step right up. But it's cool because, you know, working with a, a group of landlords, fellow tenants, you know, and we, we need to get a new neutral party kind of makes it so, you know, we can have landlords kind of step forward sometimes and we can like tell them what to say. So just want to, you know, preface all that. It's really cool that we're all working together. And so we have, one of our volunteer landlords has kind of stepped up to, you know, liaise with our, with the town, you know, police department on like COVID enforcement and all of that. You know, and, and like make it like a standing, you know, once monthly at the landlord tent relations council meetings, like a standing agenda item to like, you know, get feedback and, you know, provide updates and, you know, really making it like, like a, a chain of command that makes a lot of sense. And I'm really, really happy about that, rather than, you know, just not having any sort of way to communicate with like tenants and landlords, you know, on, on issues of like COVID related like enforcement stuff, you know, just want to say I'm really grateful that we have in this case, like a police department that's like so like ready and willing to, to work with like a third-party liaison in that way, rather than just call up, you know, their landlord buddy or something and, and deal with this issue, you know, before it becomes an issue in, in, in some sort of weird, weird way like that. So there will be more updates about how this all works like in the future, but basically our volunteer landlord tent relations council will be represented in, you know, a, something kind of similar to the tavern like association, but like, you know, a pandemic, you know, type that work in that way. And then, you know, continuing on like, you know, tenants rights, tent landlord rights and responsibilities, the handbook is available every Sunday at the Open Air Market at the Crest and Magic booth. And, you know, we'll be making more copies of that soon. And I just wanted to also say that, you know, our various resolutions during the pandemic, you know, have paid off a little bit, you know, within, within the reason, within reason, within the confines of, you know, federal decisions and like austerity type scenarios, because I've been hearing a lot of feedback about tenants who had reached out for help in terms of rent, who were able to get through the rent relief program application process. And their landlords have already heard back from, you know, the state about their application. So I really hope it pans out. So I have a couple tenants that are kind of keeping in touch with me about how the process works as it moves forward. But, you know, really, really glad I was able to get that info out to everybody when it was. But, you know, really, really glad I was able to get that info out to everybody when it was extended. And then just one more thing, the statewide eviction moratorium has been extended. But I didn't write down until when. It was like the first week of September, right before Labor Day. So stay tuned. I'll get that info out there. But, um, you know, at least there's that little bit of protection. A lot of us were really worried about the August 20th deadline that, um, and so it's, it's good that it's been extended for a bit longer at least. And I think that's it in terms of tenant issues.
Good stuff. Okay. So it looks like George from Chasen is here. Russell was just texting saying he was looking for the link. Ari, did you resend it to him as well? But he, I think he said he found it. So I'm surprised he's not here yet.
Um, I can resend it to him now, but yeah, he was definitely on that email.
Yeah, he said he couldn't find it for a second and he was looking to resend it, but then he said he found it. So.
Okay. Oh, yeah. He, I see that email now. All right.
But why don't we go ahead and just while we wait for him to show up, let's do some of these easy agenda items. I would like to motion that we appoint John Litten as a full planning board member and chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, John, for serving. John.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think what's interesting and exciting about John returning to the planning board is he served a full term on the planning board previously. And then we tapped him to chair the ZBA for a while. So, you know, we have an experienced planning board member and a person with experience doing, doing the chair job. So I think he'll be a great fit, you know, to augment like the smart young people we have on the planning board. So it's, it's really a solid team. So I think it's, it's important and great that John's willing to step up. Next item, we might as well, this is maybe more of a discussion. So I'm going to hold off. I'm gonna, um, are you guys okay if I go ahead and move the, uh, the, the staffing memo that Nancy, our treasurer, sent us regarding the plan to increase Nicole Monco's salary from eighteen dollars an hour to twenty dollars an hour. That, that's essentially what this memo says.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
And I'll just comment that Nancy was, was really pleased and found Nicole's work during the last several months while things have been crazier with COVID to be very, very helpful.
And, and, and good luck and thank you to Sam Zeiler, who's leaving us to go further his studies.
Right. So Sam had been working part-time and, you know, that's one of the ways that we're feeling comfortable paying for this raise for Nicole is that, um, you know, this will be, you know, a net improvement in terms of, of our expenditures, but we're able to provide some of that money to, um, to pay for Nicole's additional hourly rate. Okay. So Russell is now here and George is here. So why don't we go ahead and have them walk us through their proposals that they shared with us? So I'll let you guys take it away.
Why don't I make an opening call and turn it over to George? Apologies for late. I was desperately waving at you because I signed in on YouTube, not at the meeting. So I was in the wrong place. Here I am. So you guys have boldly funded the exploration for a number of wells. The majority of them have been reasonably successful. You now have something in the order of 200 gallons a minute of capacity to replace water you would otherwise purchase from New York City DEP into the future. But you need to connect it and something a little over a hundred gallons a minute is coming from four wells drilled on the reservoir property on and around the reservoirs with, and a fourth well that is just off the property. You're familiar with this on Mohawk Preserve land. And there's a land transfer in place right now to bring that land into the municipal ownership, which I think is, is the right step. So there's some, there's one, there, there are four wells there that need to be connected in and in conversation with, with Blue and in conversation, a lot of what ifs. The thought is let's run wire to them, run pumps to them and discharge them into the reservoirs. Because then they can follow their, their normal courses down to the, um, to the treatment plant. And in the meantime, they can refresh the reservoirs. So George is, has, you know, my, my partner here on the engineering side, I'm the hydrogeologist, has the budget together to get that done. You also have invested in two wells at Moreyella Park. They collectively on an average, under average weather conditions will produce just under a hundred gallons a minute. So that's why collectively they're looking at about 200. And there, there are some, it's in fact the more costly program because unlike up at the reservoir, this is water that will have to be treated, chlorinated and pressure balanced and placed into the system as opposed to the four up at the reservoir that simply need to be pumped into the reservoir. So there's just more work to be done to bring those online. But as a cost benefit thing, they're still at a lower price point ultimately than purchased water from DEP. So congratulations to you to be at somewhere over 200 gallons a minute of potential capacity. That's something in the order of a third of what you purchase right now or better. The, the volume of water that these wells will produce will vary seasonably. And we're looking for a permit from the, from the DEC that will allow us to just take the max that you can take seasonally without causing undue drawdown, all of which we have studied. And the test protocols, which we have reviewed with DEC and we have done appropriate off-site monitoring. So that is sort of the role in here to either George or Tim to talk about the amount of funding that you have available from DEP to finance the connection work and to back pay yourself for all the drilling you've already done. And that money comes with some fairly tense scheduling or it expires. And so we need, you know, if you are amenable to our proposal, we need to kind of start tomorrow to meet that clock. So that's my, that's my on-ramp for either Tim or George. But thank you very much for the opportunity to have you, help you find all this water. And now we go to the next step, which is how do we get it into your pipes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let George, um, you know, provide some technical comments or background on the project. I'm def- and I'll, I'll fill in on, you know, what stresses me out or makes me nervous about the timing of being able to use the funding that, you know, it seems like we have access to from the DEP, but it's, uh, it's no slam dunk. But I'll let George, you know, comment on the project if, if, you know, everything works out the way it should.
So we broke the proposal up into, um, it's one master proposal, but it's really broken up into two parts. So we have the, one part of the project would be focused on the four wells around the reservoir system and then two wells down at the Moreyella Park area. So if you look through the various tasks, there are certainly a lot of similarities between them. But as Russell mentioned, the one big difference is, is that the wells at Moreyella Park will require a treatment building. The treatment that we're talking about is chlorination. Uh, and then that obviously would get pumped into your, your water distribution system. And it would continue to use the storage tank that you already have and the piping network that you already have. So it's a relatively low cost system in either scenario to get waters to your, to, you know, eventually to your users. The, the advantage of the reservoir system really is you've already paid for a treatment facility that can handle this additional flow. So it's, um, it's essentially very, very low cost water. Certainly going to be much lower cost than, than purchasing from the DEP, which is what you guys do. I'm going to go up right now. You supplement your supplies. So we did, um, we actually did a study for the village. I forget exactly when it wrapped up. We'll say this past spring, uh, that looked at various options, more, more focused on the reservoirs. And certainly any opportunity that we get to reduce your dependency on the DEP was one of our objectives. So that was, you know, looking at different sized reservoir systems. And one of the options is of course, taking advantage of these wells that you guys have already invested, you know, some of your assets into to explore. The timing of the project, and I'm sure Tim is going to talk more about this, is also one of our concerns because the longer we wait to do the project or projects, obviously the risk can start changing on, on the projects. And the risks I'm talking about are financial risks. So what we're really looking at is, is the, the Moreyella Park project will take a longer time period to get through the review and approval just from our experience with Department of Health and DEC. The reservoir project will take less time. So we're actually proposing to put more effort into the Moreyella Park work first to get that into the regulatory review process first in, in allowing us enough time to get the approvals in place. And then of course, you know, do the construction for it. The construction for the Moreyella Park will take longer as well because we're building a, a building. It's going to have a concrete foundation. It's going to have walls. It's going to have all the plumbing and electrical that go along with that. Whereas with the work at the reservoir, we have to provide piping and electrical conduit and, and electrical source and the pumps, but that's it. All of those are going to feed, you know, the, the strategy is to feed those into the existing reservoir system that you already have. So the strategy is to kind of reverse, you know, the, the easier project in the sense of a regulatory approval from our point of view is, um, is there, is the reservoir project. But we really want to get the Moreyella project underway and in for review. And, and one other item that I'll talk about is, is, um, you know, we've done a lot of Department of Health reviews. It seems like in the last couple of years with water projects. We have a very, very active project right now in a town not too far from you guys. And we have experienced very on and off regulatory review response. One of the things that will help with this project is, is that this is a DEP funded project that is supplementing some of the needs for the various aqueduct shutdowns that they're doing. So the DEP along with, you know, Tim's relationships with, with various regulatory folks helps us move that project along. And similar to another project that we're doing for another town, you know, when you make certain calls and say, hey, this is a priority project for this DEP shutdown, we get reviews done much quicker than if it was just a standalone standard project, not related to this type of work. There's also been some changes that have been occurring recently in the county department of health. They've made some staffing personnel changes in the last few weeks. So Tim Rose right now is managing the environmental group over there. Tim comes from, he's an engineer by trade, but he comes from the emergency services group. I've actually had the opportunity within two weeks of working with him on two complicated project decisions that had to be made and for two different municipalities. And in both scenarios, he was able to turn around answers within days, if not a week or two. And I will tell you from my experience, that's unusual. And so to me, that's a very positive sign that when we go to the county for their portion of the review and their comments, that we're going to get timely turnaround and, and get responses, you know, be able to respond back to something relatively quickly. So from a scheduling, timing perspective, I think there is a path that we can move forward with. And, and I, you know, Tim's obviously going to talk about some of those risks a little bit more. But, um, we've tried to laid out, you know, our proposals. So it's very methodical if you're stepping through from, you know, task to task as you work your way down through there. There are a few tasks that we were not a hundred percent certain on right now. For instance, um, in the Moreyella Park, we're not certain if we're going to need any more wetland delineation work that, that's being done out there. There was some preliminary work that was done earlier on for the, for the, for the wells that are out there right now. I'm not sure how much we're going to need. So, so there are a few tasks that are listed in here and we really tried to identify those as if warranted. So obviously if we don't need to do the work, we, we certainly don't want to do the work. So there are a handful of tasks throughout the project that are set up that way. And we can certainly walk through any of the tasks if you want to, or, or, or any of the line items if you want to. But they are very similar in overall procedural approval.
So can you, and you know, very briefly, just tell us the difference between?
I heard the first part of that. Hello?
I don't know. Can anyone hear Tim?
No.
We lost you, Tim. You're frozen. I guess he was trying to add, ask a question. Why don't you just keep going, George? And he can ask when he comes back.
So, um, the ideal situation would be to move forward with an authorization. One of our first steps is to get the survey crews out there and start their work. I actually spoke with the survey manager tonight. And he is able to shift his schedules so that we can get that work underway next week, which is ideal for us because normally they have a, say, three to four week backlog before they can get you into their schedule. You know, we talked a little bit about the importance of getting their work completed so we can get on with the design for, for the project. Another item that will happen very quickly at the front end is, um, is wrapping up any loose ends on any seeker related work that needs to be done out there. Again, we've already started some of that seeker process is my understanding with some of the, um, with some of the well work. And we'll get that clarification. Russell's already laying groundwork confirming with Department of Health for the ownership or the controls that you have to maintain around each well. Anytime you have a public water supply, you gotta have 200 feet of control, a hundred feet of ownership. So these wells are located on the park property. So, you know, working out those details will have to be finalized. We have another project right now where the wells are actually located on state land. We were able to obtain a license relatively easily. When I say easily, I mean, from, from the state, that's an easy process. It only took us like 12 months. And now, you know, and a lot of that is because, you know, the state has a lot of agencies that they have to kind of confirm and check with. And we're now in the process, now that the design is wrapped up, that we're also wrapping up a permanent easement on that project. But this, but the state DOH was fully willing to leave the well in a licensing stature versus a permanent easement stature. So that's, you know.
And we clearly understand that the park is not owned by the state, but, um, yeah, maybe as an analogy, I guess is your point that there might be some flexibility. I think Tim has pretty deeply researched whether alienation is necessary. And I, George, just to catch you up, I think that there's not much question that the alienation process has to be followed. The piece that we're trying to resolve right now is can we alienate just the well pads and the building, which would be just be a, you know, a fraction of an acre that would in fact be sort of assigned to the water project? Or do, does the health department take a strict perspective of they want a hundred foot of ownership around those wells to be part of the alienated property, which would be frustrating? So we're reaching out to the state right now to find out if they're willing to be flexible on this in the way that they were flexible on that other project that involved state land. And, and you know about this because you authorized us to begin the alienation support work the other couple of weeks ago. So thank you all.
And the person you need to speak to at the state was not big last week. So.
Right. So we're, we're chasing, we're chasing them this week.
So I think the message that I'd like to convey is that, you know, we're obviously very comfortable doing this type of work. We've, we've done, you know, hundreds of different wells throughout, you know, Chasen's experiences. We're very familiar with the process in this area. We certainly know the steps that it's going to take to complete this. One of the earlier tasks in this project, uh, outside of getting the, the survey or seeker completed is, um, you know, is we're. is, um, you know, is we're essentially putting together a, a schedule that we are going to live with. Uh, we being, you know, the village, um, Chasen as a teaming, uh, partner, as well as with the D P. Cause we need the D P's concurrence that, you know, as we move forward through this, that they're okay with how the money is being allocated and when. Um, well, I guess I'll speak to this a little bit. Um, you know, we did have the opportunity to speak with, um, the project manager from the D P on a conference call with Tim. And they laid out some very specific, um, or identified some very specific language in the agreement that the, that the village has um, with the D P about hitting milestones throughout that project. And the first big milestone that we really want to hit is getting through the approval. That is having, um, construction plans ready for bid, uh, a cost estimate completed. Um, a pathway, if not completed, uh, for the wells. We don't have to have full ownership, but you have to have a pathway to, to know how you're gonna, to comply with the ownership of the wells or the, or the, you know, the control area around the wells. Um, as well as, um, you know, getting approval from the regulatory agencies, which in this case is really the D O H and the D E C. Those are the two agencies that we're, we're looking for approvals from. Um, the, once we cross that milestone, which is the, the first major milestone in the, in the eyes of the D P, um, we free up the ability for reimbursement of, um, costs that the village has been absorbing at this point, which includes, you know, your various exploratory well options. Um, as well as, you know, the design fees and the survey fees and stuff like that. Planning fees that, you know, will accumulate through the, through the hall here. So that's our first major goal that we want to get to. Obviously, the second one would be, um, getting to a point of selecting a contractor, bidding and selecting a contractor. And then the first, uh, or the last major milestone would, you know, be the construction of each project. And they really won't, after we get through the design phases, really won't be running on a parallel path. Ultimately, the reservoir work will probably move faster. It's a simpler project, it's less complicated, it doesn't involve a lot of concrete and building construction. It's really just putting, you know, pipes and conduits and pumps in the ground. So, um, they, they won't necessarily complete at the same time. Um, but we want to set out those milestones very carefully. Uh, work with the village to make sure that we're all on the same page with this. And then ensure that the D P is in agreement with the, you know, scheduling that we're setting out on this. Um, I don't know if Tim is back and wants to talk about the agreement more. But that's really one of the major strategies of the project that has nothing to do with the engineering or the, or the flow of water through the pipes or anything. It really has to do with overall management of the project. Um, so it's certainly something that I think is very important, why we want to talk about it. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, this is Tim, I'm, I'm back, um. Now I'm on via my phone and the laptop. Um, yeah, I, I think that summary was fine. I, you know, just so our board understands, and this is what's definitely going to stress out our treasure, is the, the way this D P agreement works. Um, until the regulators give us a green light on the wells, we don't get reimbursed for like these engineering expenses or even the, the earlier expenses that, that we've had regarding drilling the wells. You know, we already have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into this project. You know, where we have invoices, where we need to get reimbursements. Um, and then what's a little nerve wracking is, you know, what if New York City's cash flow picture totally changes? And they for some reason have to hit pause or even worse regarding this agreement. So that's what's really scary about all of this. Um, you know, the agreement that we have with them is, there's a work that needs to be done in terms of, uh, a leak that we have in reservoir for the same reservoir where we had the, the oil issue. And this leak we knew about for the last couple of years, so we were able to secure money from the D P to repair that. Um, but then we have these two new projects, you know, the wells at the water treatment plant property. And then the, the couple of wells that we've tested at the Morel Pool property. Um, so I, I actually really appreciate that Russell follow up again today with the Department of Health to see if they can help us with guidance in terms of what an alienation process might look like at the Moreyello Pool property. Because that's a bit confusing. Um, but you know, the, these are the risks that we face as a municipality. You know, we're going to have to spend money on this project. But if all the stars align, this would be a very valuable endeavor for, for New Paltz's municipal water system. Because as Russell pointed out, that, you know, these, you know, it's a total of, of six different wells that we could get online would account for about twenty percent of the water that we use. Um, which would be, which would be very important, you know. We, we currently source about forty percent of the water from our surface water reservoirs. Um, so we would be used, you know, being able to source more than half of our water locally, which would be exciting. So what do we want to do? Do we want to go ahead and, you know, agree to this proposal and have Chasen start working on this and start paying those bills with the anticipation that, um, we get approvals from the, the regulators before, you know, you know, we're, we're most likely going to have to borrow money to pay our Chasen invoices while we wait for D P reimbursements.
Right, we don't have cash flow like that, right? So, um, this has D P signaled to you at all? Is, is your cynicism general or are there more indicators of it? I mean, just trying to so.
Yeah, we have, we have a.
Still bawling, but I'm just wondering.
We have a, a, yeah, we have a good working relationship with the D P. Um, I don't think that they're trying to, to scare us when they say that, you know, it would make sense for us to move this project along as quickly as possible. Um, because, you know, like everyone, no one can predict how long the, you know, the, the, the pandemic challenges will exist, you know, will it be another year, will it be another two years or five years? It, it could be any of those things. And, you know, how impactful might all of this stuff be to New York City's balance sheet? Um, it seems like it'll be okay, but you know, there could be hiccups along the, the road.
You do have a signed agreement, so, um, it, it's not a speculative agreement. There may be, I think there's a greater risk of delay than there is of cancellation.
Yeah, we have a signed agreement, um, and I, I don't, but, it's, it's not, it's not a slam dunk either. You know, there, there's, if New York City's financial picture becomes super, super challenged, we, we could, you know, there, there could be a domino effect that, that we have to, um, stomach.
Right, but, uh, you know, just to finish, when you say we're going to flip that sixty forty so that we're going to get sixty local, there's, that's, means our water is going to cost less. Like, we're doing this to reduce our water costs. So, you know, if you're thinking like R O I math and when the money is going to come back, you know, we're not doing this just to do this, we're doing this for a variety of reading, we, reasons, including, and maybe tens amount, the, the costs. Um, so that's the context of the decision as well, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're right. The, um, the I R R on this might end up, um, being different just based on how long it takes. And to Russell's point is, we, we do have a signed agreement. You know, it took us years to muscle through that agreement and get the New York City Comptroller's Office to, to register that agreement, and now it is all registered. So there's two point six million dollars for this total project. So, I don't know, I, I, I guess we, we should probably go ahead then and, um, approve the, the proposal from, from George and Russell at Chasen.
I agree.
Was that a motion and was that a second?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for translating.
Just so we're clear.
It's, it's really cool being on the other, on the side of the table now at this point in this project, you know, for, because it was a long time getting even that, that D P agreement, um, when I was in Ariana's role. So I'm excited, let's just do it.
It's good water. As a, as a hydrogeologist, I can speak for the water.
Nice.
Hey Russell, I just got to say, I was just looking at you and I said to myself, when did we write that paper? Ten years ago.
Yeah.
Year anniversary of Russell's paper Hudson Valley Water Opportunities and Challenges, which.
Yeah, I wonder if we could, uh, cur, I wonder if we could corral Scott Cupid and we'll do a, a part.
A reflection.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm already on it and right here, already. Yep.
But Russell.
Anyway, sorry for that sidebar, more to come on that, apparently.
So, but what I would like to emphasize too is like, one of the reasons that I, I like working with Chasen and Russell in particular is because, you know, he's, he's obviously, uh, uh, you know, a really good hydrogeologist. But I, I feel like Russell, your help, um, kind of shepherding this project and, and being a quasi-project manager is incredibly valuable. Just like even today, when you sent, you know, last week, we found out that, um, you know, the, the, the county D O H was, was dealing with some, um, some challenges in terms of staffing and, um, state D O H, the, the gentleman who we're trying to work with was returning from vacation. And, you know, you made sure that he got that follow-up email. So that's the only way, any, you know, this whole municipal world where everything just takes longer than it should. I feel like, you know, I, I'm really appreciative of the way you, you know, help us, um, shepherd a lot of this stuff through. Like, you know, any of these little things don't really fall through cracks when, when you're on our team. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. I take it personally. I, I want it to work for you.
Yep. It's, it's noted and very valuable. Um, okay, so we, we just approved the, uh, the proposal, so I, I guess we have a bunch of work to do now.
Mm-hmm.
George and I have to run.
Yeah.
No, but thank you all very much. Um, it, it's a pleasure working for, for communities that have a vision and not all do. Um, and you, you, you are a unified board, which is also a key to that happening, so, um, thank you. It is also helpful that you have a, a very positive relationship with the town. Um, you know, every one of these projects has a town component, and that is also, you know, a unique point in time. Um, so there are many pieces that, um, should help this happen. One of the things that will happen, um, is that you will see more of George. Uh, Tim has worked very closely with me as we have found source. And, um, rest assured that when he and I find another parcel, and if we can scare up just enough dollars for another hole, we'll try to do it. Uh, if I may be so bold, um, but you are going to see more of George. Um, and, um, George really has the ball now. Um, and I like working with George, we work on a number of projects, um, and, uh, kind of have each other's back. Uh, and that's good for me, and I think it's good for him, and we, I, I think you'll find us to be a strong team, so thank you for the opportunity. Tim, go away. And you're on two screens and you're.
Yeah, we got two Tims, it's pretty funny.
Yeah.
I don't know which one you want to be.
Does he get to vote twice?
I think I've, I think I've, uh, figured out some of these technical problems, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm surprised that feedback didn't happen sooner.
Well, I think this is George and my opportunity to say thank you and good night, and we'll be in.
Okay.
Thanks for us, I'll be in touch on our ten year anniversary.
I've got another project I also want to talk with you about, so let's.
Right on.
All right, thanks, bye.
Cool.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, George, thank you.
Yep.
You guys can hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Um, hold on, I gotta find this agenda. Okay, um, I, I'd like to go ahead and motion that we, um, approve the notice of award regarding the secondary clarifier. Um, the dollar amount was fifty nine thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, I'd like to go ahead and motion that we, um, I'm forgetting exactly what the, the proper wording should be regarding, uh, Myra French. She was our parking enforcement officer, she had to be laid off. So she's basically, uh, returning to work effective August twenty second. And we were also looking to, um, increase her, increase the, um, the hourly rate that we pay her to nineteen dollars an hour. And that would be pending a, uh, M O, uh, just an agreement with the, with the union that we would be allowed to do that. I, I think generally the union is always in favor of paying members more. Um, so there, there shouldn't be a hiccup there. But, um, technically, that's the way it should be done. Like, we can't just unilaterally change her rate that she had been paying without union involvement, but. So that's my, that's my motion to go ahead and, and rehire Myra effective eight twenty-two at an hourly rate of nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, I'm just going to knock out these things that I consider easier right now. I'd like to motion that we go ahead and move the records retention, um, schedule that was presented to us by our village clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, I'd like to motion that we move bills and claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to motion that we adopt the, uh, new law after we just had the public hearing regarding left turns.
Second.
Someone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to motion that we adopt the new law or the amendments, the tree, uh, shade tree law after the public hearing we just had this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, so, do we want to, um, go ahead and, um, explain the we wear masks campaign that we were thinking of, kind of a more coordinated effort between town, village and New Paltz? This kind of came out of, you know, some earlier ideas that we had about creating a, a mask wearing zone in New Paltz. Um, does someone want to explain this?
Um, I can try, and Ariana, if, if you want to help, um, as well. Um, so, um, campus is doing, uh, has done a tremendous amount on, um, uh, working to nurture, uh, adherence to social distancing as well as developing systems of, um, how to deal with, um, compliance and, uh, sanctions and consequences of non-compliance. Um, and really built, you know, a robust package of addressing these issues. You know, I, I, I'm, um, teaching, for example, and, and I am instructed to not let any students in my class unless they have a mask on. Um, and unless they have done their health check-in every morning. And, um, my son who's at another college is doing this, this is colleges, they're doing this, uh, you know, they have an app on their phone, they take their temperature. They answer a bunch of different health-related questions and. They answer a bunch of different health related questions and they can't be admitted to classes unless they have done those things. So this is like an example of one of the protections that's been put in place and makes me feel comfortable teaching. And, you know, we've been looking at Chief Lukeyzi and I and have been on one of the committees and Ariana has been on the other committee and we decided like that really all this messaging and all this, you know, signage and they have, you know, logos and and whatnot for trying to influence, influence, you know, positive behavior in the form of compliance. And like, we realized we should just like hold that right into the village. So the lines between the village and the campus go away. So that whether you're going home at night to a dorm or you're going home at night to someplace in the village that these behaviors in adhering to social distancing apply to your behavior off campus in the village. So bunch of stuff is percolating on this. We're gonna do, there's a pledge that all students are signing. And they have, you know, a progressive sanctions, you know, you know, you know, what you do in violations, you know, that they do have put in, you know, that there will be consequences for students. So there's an incentive for students to comply because they don't want to blow up their semester, you know, they want to be here. There's a mask complaint number two five seven mask. Somebody else figure out for me what those digits are right now. I can't read the whole thing.
Two, seven, five.
Six, two, seven, five. So all of this stuff, I'm not even gonna try. I'm just trying to give you everybody examples. The goal is that, well, you know, announce that we're, you know, the town and the village and the school district as well, and the campus are working on these issues. I know a lot of people are antsy about the students coming back and you know, my thing is more information quells fears and people know what's going on, you know, we want to just provide as much information to the community that campus is providing to students. So that's the goal. And also this idea of, you know, having a campaign that, you know, transcends all these boundaries, you know, so we came up with this. And 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 moving away from things like mandatory punitive, negative messaging towards nurturing the positive behaviors and using what's called social norming where, you know, we came up with, you know, today, my favorite, you know, hashtag New Paltz, we wear masks here. So lots, lots of different things are going to be happening. There's it's the goal is that it's seamless. And we also know that and and are weaving into, you know, day visitors to our community. So this campaign in the form of signage, for example, you know, put it up by the thruway as people come off the thruway. So more to come on that. Ariana, do you think there's anything else to add?
I think you did a really good job of covering it. You know, some of these things will will be putting on our website. It's all really happening in real time. So I know people are, I answered an email earlier today. I know people are frustrated because they're already seeing students return and feeling like we're not, you know, actively doing anything, but we totally are. It's just all like coming down the line in real time because that's the world we're living in right now. So I feel like people just need to be a little bit of little bit understanding that that's what's happening, but that there's a lot happening to mitigate the concerns. And please, you know, reach out to us if you have concerns, but you know, being yelling at us about it isn't going to make a difference either. You know, so I drafted an email that I think I sent to all of you, and I feel like we can use some of that stuff just posting it publicly because, you know, I put a lot of time and thought into it based on all the notes from our conversation today. You know, and campus isn't the enemy. You know, I think a lot of times they get painted with a broad brush and feeling like, you know, the students at the campus, they're not responsive, but they totally are. They're super participatory. We have a great working relationship. And the proof is in the pudding, you know, we've had these calls, we're a part of their committees and it's, I think it's really positive. So thank you for your update, Katie.
Yeah, that email, I totally thought that too. I don't know if you've read it, Alex, but I was like, oh, man, she wrote this already. Good. Check it off.
Yeah.
This is not a single purpose text.
Yeah, I was gonna copy and paste it.
Yeah. That was good. So folks, they'll be seeing it soon or some version thereof. The only other thing I would add is, and I don't know if this idea is ever going to come to light, and it intersects with so many of our other sort of China generate community networks is as we said before, village board members are gonna, you know, go around town this weekend and put flyers announcing that we're gonna start you know, parking fees again, as well as, you know, have masks and encourage people to do the census because those are three really important things to communicate to the community right now. There is an idea, you know, Tim saw in Province Town, you know, these these mask ambassadors or something like that, you know, where you have a citizen core of people who, you know, go around and ask, you know, have, you know, a sash on them or something that says, you know, hashtag New Paltz, we wear masks here. And, you know, you give out masks and you you try to encourage compliance. So that might happen. If people are interested in that, you can email us at the village board if that's something that sounds like, you know, I know there's a lot of people are express a lot of angst about this issue. Well, if you're comfortable about, you know, helping us address it in this way, contact us. I don't really know if that's going to turn into anything, but you know, maybe it will. Maybe it won't. Yeah. You're muted, Tim.
Okay, so we had the discussion on Village Hall Roof. We have a quote from a while ago. We've had numerous problems with the the roof in the section of the building where the treasurer and clerk's office reside. We've tried to repair it in house. We've hired firms to try to repair it. Seems like to do the roof completely over would be like close to $50,000. This is not something that we want to spend money on right now, especially while we're waiting for the new firehouse to be constructed so that we could reimagine the space very differently than how we use it right now. So it seems like probably what we should be doing is using the small or large conference room upstairs to have staff sit and work from those conference rooms if there's issue with this leaky roof. And it seems like our treasurer Nancy Bronco was supportive of this idea. Am I missing anything on this right now, Ariana?
No, I think that's a really good summary. You know, we we need to just figure out how to rearrange some things, maybe at Village Hall to make it more workable for people and you know, keep checking on the roof regularly to see what's up.
Yeah. Okay, so there there may be more info on that moving forward, but you know, especially why while Village Hall is not open to the public. I I think it's it's okay to, you know, have more staff sit upstairs. So, you know, that's the plan for now. And then in terms of the short term rental law, so this is a a concept that we have discussed for a few years now, and I feel like, you know, a few members of the village board have been more motivated to to get a law like this on the books. So we we took a draft law from another community and edited, massaged it a little bit. But I I spent some time working on it this afternoon. I feel like we're we're pretty close. I wanted to see if anyone had a chance to look at some of my edits and maybe we can discuss a little bit of it tonight.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for going through it. I I have to admit, I have to look closer at it, but I did go through it a couple of times. And I was happy with what I saw, and I really liked the stuff that you added to.
I mean, I could I could take a second to try to describe what I what I feel like this, how I feel like this law should work is, you know, we have different zoning districts in the village. You know, some are clearly commercial like B one and B two or then we also have residential districts like R one, R two, R three, the N B R gateway. I would also consider a a commercial district, but the idea would be if you live in a residential district, you can offer up your house or your property, whether you're, you know, and as long as this is fine with your landlord. You know, if you're a renter or an owner, you could Airbnb or short term rental, short term rent out your your property, provided that, you know, it's clear that it's your permanent residence and also that you're not doing it more than for a total of three months of the year or for not longer than 29 days. And I think that's a a technical definition. I think transient is considered 29 or less and permanent is 30 days, 30 nights or more. So, you know, we're using those lines in the sand. So the idea is that, you know, people definitely can, you know, take a vacation and then, you know, receive some income by doing a short term rental thing. Or let's say you regularly do, you know, the, you know, renting out a bedroom in your house as a as a short term rental. But as long as you live there, it's fine. Like, the the thing that we're trying to be mindful of are investors who just buy properties and turn them into full time, long term, short term rental properties. Then that's where I think we run into problems where we, you know, create affordability issues in our community or create problems with our community's character and, you know, healthy, commercial and residential balance balances that we would like to have. And, you know, I think there's a there's an important distinction between a long term rental property, like investors buy numerous long term rental properties, but that's different because if you're a renter, you're entrenched in the community. You can, you know, volunteer to serve on the Z B A or, you know, help at the library fair. You're clearly, you know, you have the opportunity to be a community member. If you're, you know, just in New Paltz for a weekend, you know, via a short term rental agreement, like you're not, you know, you have no chance of of being involved in our community. And that might be fine in a a commercial district. Or if you're staying in a hotel or a or a bed and breakfast, but you know, I think what we want to do is like use zoning to make sure that, you know, we're protecting our community. So that's that's the summary, at least the way I see it in terms of, you know, the function of this law.
Yeah, that was great. I I love how you articulated it all. I mean, fundamentally, if it's not owner occupied, we want to ban it. And the definition of owner occupied is, you know, you can rent out a room while you're in the rest of the house. Or, I mean, and I think we need to talk about this one because I don't know what the period of time. I had said to Will 51% of the year and he came back with nine months out of the year, but.
I just put the I put the the that you could do, you could rent out your place three months. That's where you get the nine.
Right.
But you can't rent to one person for more than 21 nights in a row.
Right. This is more the residency like thing. This is more the if you're it's the the definition of owner occupied that involves you not being in the house when you're doing the short term rentals. So nine months is what you think you have to be in the house. I don't have a I mean, I I mean, I would, I would be okay with less, a little less than that, but I don't feel super strongly about.
I feel like if if you're doing half the year, then then it's just a short term rental or or, you know, it's it's not your permanent residence.
Right. I I got the 51% just from the whole like, that's if you live in two states, you pay taxes for you 51%. I didn't have any like basis for it. You say it. I mean, I guess I'm comfortable with nine months. I guess I would like to hear what others feel. I keep thinking like a new model might be like that you could rent to students for 10 months or nine months and then Airbnb it in the summer.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I wonder if this would open that up in in a way that would actually work for tenants' rights. You know.
They would need to keep it nicer.
Like, I totally what I was thinking earlier, reading through this, I was like, you know, it would really, it would really change, change things for for us.
I know. So like, let's think about that, though, because that's like an unintended consequence, right? Like, we should be cognizant of like thinking of what the scenarios that could be here. I mean, that's a good one, I think.
Yeah.
There are, there there is a set rule of like how it's considered your domicile. I remember this coming up when I was on the board because we were talking about where people live versus where they serve as as local elected officials. And there was something about like having to sleep in that space for more than four nights each week. There are like something along those lines. So there are there's definitely things out there, I guess, is what I'm trying to say that would define whether or not it's considered your primary or permanent residence, which is.
We want to find if we want to find other lines in the sand that we could point to, that would be great. You know, so it's, you know, it just feels less arbitrary.
What? I just I realized I was, Alex, can I just finish my, I was, yeah. And so I can't remember how far I got, but yeah, so there's this owner occupied in the definition. There's that we want this in residential zones. We're cool with it in, you know, it doesn't matter owner occupied or otherwise, short term rentals and commercial. This is a residential zone. We already talked about the less than 30 nights equals short term. I just, I wanted to say, because in my conversations with Corey about this. And really, I'm I'm thinking, I I guess I was just gonna throw this out there, like Corey said, you know, you can make a cogent argument that these should have more than one annual inspection, like maybe twice a year. You know, that has implications for building department capacity and.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think you need to do that based on.
That was, you could talk to him about it.
No, but that's no, but I think he's talking about a short term rental, that short term rental most of the year. If if it's clearly your property and you're only short term renting renting it out three months of the year.
You're right. You're right.
Don't need to do that.
That I hadn't, we weren't at that far down the road with that stuff when that conversation transpired. So duly noted.
It's the same thing with this license idea, like we don't need to create a new layer of bureaucracy because the 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 whole idea is that the only, you know, the only people who should be doing short term rentals is if it's your permanent residence.
Right, right. I mean, and I mean, I was like, I mean, I think you can cogently argue that the long term rentals should get inspected in the winter as well as in the summer or when, you know, I know that's it's not always that, but yeah, anyway. And then the last one is just that we we wouldn't need to do it now, but we would need to determine for the fee schedule what the financial penalties would be. So I I don't think we should leave that till later, even though we don't need to put it in the law. It makes sense to have the conversation while we're talking about it. So those are the things that I was thinking about.
So I would love to like take this draft that I've tried to massage and. So I would love to like take this draft that I've tried to massage and send it back to Will and get his feedback because, you know, some of the stuff I, you know, I'm obviously no lawyer, so.
Yeah, and and he, I I I had a conversation to ask him for this and he sent it and I didn't have time to talk to him or really look at it closely. I just really, I I I feel a sense of urgency with this, so I wanted to get something to for us to just move the conversation along, which we have, so I'm really happy about that.
Do you guys want to take a look at it by end of day tomorrow and then let's just send him whatever we have to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, you also had some substantive, yes.
I just wanted to point out, like, Section 11, that kind of addresses like, you know, property, like the rental scenario where long-term rentals provide for part of the year and short-term rental is for part of the year. That fits really nicely, I think, into the updated state, you know, tenant protections regarding putting the onus of finding a new tenant on the landlord. You know, like it works really beautifully is all I want to say is like, if anything, I think this law could help the way some parts of it are written right now in this draft could really help promote that aspect of of the state law that actually has been a really big issue in our community on the past few months. You know, it's it's the landlord's responsibility to to figure out what to do with with a rental if, you know, a pandemic strikes and somebody needs to stay home, you know, someplace else. So I think this could actually have some other really good impacts, not just on affordability, but on tenant protections, that's all.
So I'm just remembering, you know, one of the I I was gonna make a, how do I want to say this? I want to talk about prom process, but the reason is because Will brought up a scenario like what if like a couple moves out of their house and they just Airbnb it for a while while they stay at, you know, somebody's mom's house in a different zip code, but not far from here. And and Will was kind of like spitballing these like what-if scenarios that might be like low likelihood. And 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 I was like, I kind of want to just get this to public hearing. And I I I, number one, feel like that's a really low probability thing, but I also feel like maybe it's not, right? And and in.
Yeah, but they still, they still, that that couple would still be able to rent it out for three months.
Right. But what if it's more than that or whatever? But my point being like, I'd like us to get this to public hearing to hear what the issues are. I kind of think we need to approach the public hearing process a little bit. Like, let's think of it iteratively, like not like, oh, my God, we have to make this perfect before we go to public hearing. We could change it, then we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board. I, we have a shift in our thinking to get it out there, not to just throw stuff to public hearings, I'm not saying that, but to to get enough to provoke the conversation so you can identify the issues in the public hearing. And if you have to go back to the damn drawing board, you do. And you just go through the process, but I think.
I'm all for that.
I don't think we're super bad at, but like that whole like idea of getting it like so far along so that when you get it to public hearing, don't, you can just keep going, is is not really like what it's supposed to be.
I I I don't think we ever do that. I I'm I'm a huge proponent of using public hearings to modify and.
But I think, and my point is, I think we usually feel compelled to get it things a little more perfect than I'm saying we need to do. That's okay, so I'm not saying we were super bad culprits of that at all. I'm saying let's just do that and leave a little bit even more and name it and own it.
I appreciate that. Would it be for all properties moving forward or would it, it's a retroactive for all properties?
Yeah, it's for any property, like. So so the way it would work too is like, if you were an investor and you have a short-term rental property, you can't do that anymore if it's in a residential zone. You just have to long-term rent it, which I don't even think is that big of a deal in the Village of New Paltz. Like, I pencil out all the time whether it makes sense to do a short-term rental versus a long-term rental. And long-term rental often just makes more sense in the Village of New Paltz because of our proximity to the college.
I I just was asking really because probably people who have purchased properties for the sole purpose of Airbnb. And so this would certainly change change their whole scope of what they're doing, but.
Yeah.
I'm all for this, thank you.
So the whole licensing thing, maybe that was why Will put that in there, thinking of these scenarios that maybe are unique, but we still want a backdoor for people who could provide, you know, enough documentation and be like, hey, this is my story. So so may, and again, I didn't get a chance to talk to him after he sent this on.
I, we don't, we don't require licenses to do.
Did that.
But we don't, but we don't, we don't require licenses to do long-term rentals.
Right, I I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to just, it doesn't matter. I'll talk to Will and and I I mean, I I'm totally comfortable with just doing like we do with long terms, just, I mean, I think we all are, right? It would just be a registration and inspection, right? Which again, reminder, community, if you're doing Airbnb now or short-term rentals, the law already applies. We're just talking about whole nother way of addressing it. If you are doing a short-term rental, you should be registered with the village and for a very, I think, affordable price, get an inspection that you can slap up on your listing saying that your local government has.
Yeah, and this this draft law reemphasizes that that's a requirement. So everyone make their edits and then we're gonna send it to Will end of business tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, I think we can just go on to the liaison reports. Oh, Bill's not here, so we can't do the planning board liaison report.
Who is at the planning board, well, at, I watched the planning board meeting on YouTube if you want me to give a little.
Yeah, do it, do it, do it.
Okay, I mean, there were a couple of things that were seemed pretty basic that were approved. But the big, the the big one that was on the agenda for the first time is the PIT project, the Lalo Group project that is the PIT project adjacent to Village Hall. You know, it was super preliminary, they didn't even submit enough to start the seeker process. But it was, you know, Rick Golden gave a really good update. It seems like they they say right now that they won't need any variances. We'll see how that plays out if that ends up being the case, since this is so preliminary. Some of the questions were, you know, about elevation that wasn't mapped and there, the planning board is gonna do a site walk on that. So that's something that's just kind of beginning and getting the ball rolling. I know the Environmental Policy Board is really interested in it, in that project, so they're, you know, looking and watching to see what happens. But it seems like the planning board had some good questions, even though it was really early on. And that's the main thing from the planning board meeting.
Thanks, Ari. Okay, that's, that's probably all we have, right?
Yeah.
All right. Eight forty-one, signing off, my motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hi.
Hi, thanks, everybody.